Good evening and welcome to our June 10th regularly scheduled School Board meeting. At this time, if you could please stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. After the Pledge of Allegiance, please remain standing for a brief moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
At this time, if you could remain standing, we would like to observe a moment of silence for three members of the District 196 community who passed away recently. Giyanya Simuntri, an Eastview High School student, Axel Carl Anderson, a special education teacher at Transition Plus, and Amir Harden, an Echo Park Elementary student. All right, School Board, the first item on the agenda is the approval of the agenda. There are no additions or modifications to the agenda tonight. Is there a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second. Motion by Suchin and a second by Jackie. All those in favor of approval, say aye.
Aye.
Motion, all those opposed, motion carries unanimously on a seven to zero vote. Our first item after the approval of the agenda, as we're working through our audio feedback issues, we'll get there, is our recognition. I would like to welcome Paul Kovach and Kyle Paulson to the podium to introduce us to the DECA Distributive Education Clubs of America and BPA Business Professionals of American National Qualifiers.
Good evening, Board members, Chairperson Johnson and Superintendent Krieger. My name is Kyle Paulson and I am a business teacher at Rosemont High School along here with Paul Kovak from Eagan. ISD 196 has a longstanding tradition in student achievement and participation in career technical student organizations, or CTSOs. Currently, more than 400 ISD 196 students participate in five recognized CTSOs, co-curriculars, and we're excited to introduce our BPA and DECA students who attended the national conference this year. Students participate in DECA and BPA, gain knowledge and develop skills in career cluster areas including accounting and finance, business management, entrepreneurship, marketing, and personal finance literacy. Tonight, I'm excited to introduce three students from Rosemont High School and one from Eastview who participated at the DECA International Career Development Conference in Anaheim. From Eastview, Grace Johnson participated in accounting series role play. From Rosemont, Alexis Olson and Grace Mencink participated in sixth place overall at the international conference in buying and team merchandising. And Kylie Canusen, who participated in sports and entertainment series role play. Paul Kovak's going to introduce our BPA members.
I have the honor of introducing students from Eastview and Eagan who represented ISD 196 in the state of Minnesota at the 2024 BPA National Conference this past May in Chicago. We had a great view, we were on Michigan Avenue, so it was really fun. Our students from Eastview, Suhas Pathula, he was in presentation team, and Srihaan Satapathy, he was in business law and ethics and also in presentation team. And from Eagan High School, I have with me tonight Eva Abe, she was in social media marketing campaign team, Isaac Bordsheller, esports team, Salmek Garishakurdi, he was with social media marketing campaign team, Atharaneer, also with social media marketing campaign team. And I have Abdullahhad Rahman, he was with the economic research team, and finally Nikhil Talatam, who participated in computer security. Board, I'd like to welcome our students and thank you very much.
Come around the front there. There you go. There we go. Awesome job, congratulations. Congratulations. Congratulations, awesome job. Congratulations, fantastic. Congratulations. Congratulations. Awesome job, congratulations. Congratulations, well done. Congratulations, welcome. Congratulations, welcome. Bye bye. Thank you so much for being here. Thank you so much, absolutely. All right, next on our agenda is superintendents' recognition, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger.
Okay, we have many more things to celebrate. First, I'd like to start off by congratulating the class of 2024. It has been an incredibly joyous last few weeks celebrating more than 2,000 students who completed this important educational milestone. The commitment to education and perseverance of this graduating class is truly impressive, and we hope that they carry with them the things that they've learned from their time in District 196. We are proud of them all, we wish them best in the future, and we are very grateful for sunny skies and nice venues to celebrate our graduates in. So now I have a list of successes to share with you. Congratulations to the Dakota United Hawks adapted softball teams on both winning championships at the state tournaments in May. For the PI team, it was their third straight state title, and the CI team won a championship this year after finishing runner-up last year. We look forward to recognizing them in person at our next regular School Board meeting on June 24th. And congratulations to the Rosemont High School Boys Track and Field Team on winning their second straight Class 3A team title last weekend at the Minnesota State High School League State Championships. There were also two individual state champions and other top finishers from District 196. We also look forward to celebrating their success at our next meeting. And congratulations to the Rosemont High School Girls Softball Team on winning the championship in the Class 4A State Tournament last week. We will meet them at another meeting. And congratulations to the Eagan High School Boys Tennis Team on qualifying for and competing in the state tournament last week. And congratulations to the Eastview High School Baseball Team on their section championship and good luck in this week's state tournament. Eastview plays in the quarterfinal round Thursday at 1:00 PM at CHS Field in St. Paul. And lastly, I want to congratulate the District 196 students who qualified to compete in the National Speech and Debate Tournament June 20th and 21st in Des Moines, Iowa. Safe travels and good luck to all of these students, their families, and coaches.
Thank you.
Excellent. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is our special communication request portion of the meeting. We have three speakers signed up for our special communication requests. People who would like to speak during special communication requests must submit a form at least five days in advance of the meeting. Ten speakers receive up to four minutes to share comments. We use a timer for public comments, which will turn green when you can start, amber when you have a bomb, 30 seconds remaining, and red when we'd like you to wrap up your comments. As a reminder, Board members generally don't respond to special communication requests, this is the time to listen, and if any questions are asked during special communication requests, a member of the administration will follow up with the speaker after the meeting. First, our special, first on the agenda for our special communication request is Ms. Judy Hayes.
My name is Judy Hayes and I teach in District 196. Chair Johnson, School Board members, Superintendent Krieger. I have taught in this district for 40 years as a speech-language pathologist. And Superintendent Krieger, you have touched my teaching experience in so many ways. Thank you for supporting early childhood special education. You have always started with what is right rather than what is acceptable. You have listened with thoughtfulness and you have supported me as, and you have supported me as a professional when I have spoken up for what our students deserve. School Board members, as we begin a new chapter, I look forward to working together to continue our journey of one district, infinite possibilities, as we support our earliest learners. Because rigorous, long-term research conducted by the Center for the Developing Child at Harvard University has shown that early intervention has the following evidence-based outcomes. One in three infants and toddlers who received early intervention services did not later present with a disability or require special education. And research has consistently demonstrated that early childhood special education can lead to improved cognitive, language, and motor development, reducing the need for more intensive special education. Superintendent Krieger, I want to again thank you for your support.
Next on the agenda for special communication requests is Ms. Nicole Herring.
Thank you very much. I am here representing the Eastview Community Foundation, and the Eastview Community Foundation since 2000 has been supporting the students and schools in the Eastview community. We support them through various ways, through random acts of kindness, through scholarships, and through grants to our teachers. I am here to talk about the grants to our teachers that we have given this year. Our grant process each year is we request grant applications at the beginning of the calendar year for the following school year. A group of board members review the applications and select the recipients based on how their plans, use, the funds match with the EC, with the Eastview Community Foundation missions and goals, and also the amount of grant funding we have available. This year, we selected four grant recipients. The total amount of grants given this year is $12,143. A check for the amount was sent to the school district for distribution to the grant recipients. Our four recipients are: Eastview High School, the grant title is "Unveiling the DNA Mysteries: PCR and Gel Electrophoresis in the Biology Classroom." Highland Elementary, their grant title is "Creating Inclusive Playground Spaces for All Students of All Abilities." And Greenleaf Elementary, their grant title is "Beyond the Frame: Showcasing Student Talent with Portable Display Walls." And finally, Thomas Lake Elementary with a grant title of "Nature's Classroom: Enhancing Learning Outdoors." If anyone has any questions, you can certainly contact us via our website. Thank you.
Thank you. And our last speaker of the evening is Ms. Mary Snyder.
My name is Mary Snyder, and thank you, Board, for listening to me today. I'm a parent of two high school teenagers who go to Rosemont High School, and I've been in this district since 1980. Does anyone want to do the math on that? Summer break, you all got to pass, you all got to pass. I've been teaching in our district for 28 years, and I started in our district in 1980 as a second grade at Northville Elementary School, and then onto Rosemont Middle School and Rosemont High School, where I am the graduating class of 1991. I'm also a very, very proud member of our Dakota County United Educators Teachers Union, led by our union president Kate Schmidt. I wanted to take a minute today to thank all of our district leaders and all of you and our community who continue to strive to make our district the best that it can be. The accomplishments and successes to those that continue to invest in the time and energy in our district in a positive way, thank you for that. I and so many others in our district, community and teachers' union, continue to work together each day for the betterment of every student in our district. I have had the honor to experience this district as a student, a teacher, and now a parent. In my humble opinion, what we have in our district is truly special, because at the end of the day, all the stakeholders know the value of working together. We have seen great successes, and we have been through great challenges in our district. We may have differences in how an issue may need to be solved or addressed, and when that happens, the open lines of communications begins, as we all know. Our amazing Superintendent Mary Krieger and our Dakota County United Educator Kate Schmidt, our president, knows the value of working together, and our board, especially in trying times, and they continue to strive to lead our district in such a manner. Thank you Superintendent, President Schmidt, our board, and our community. I know, understand, I know and understand how our district and my colleagues has helped me grow as an educator, and I am forever thankful to my teachers and staff who made a difference in my life from a very young student. The staff members and teachers had encouraged me, had encouraged me, encouraged me at a young age and helped me believe in myself when I was doubtful of my own abilities. I could name every teacher who shaped me into the person I am today, but I only have four minutes. You can talk to me after. Now I have the honor, now I have the honor and privilege to be a teacher and a part of the lives of so many students and families. I also see how teachers and the staff members help my own two children succeed at Rosemont High School and their other schools. We've had so many great people support our district, and in my opinion, we have great leaders too. Superintendent Krieger, you have led our district for many years. I want to take a minute to thank you for your leadership, your vision, your guidance, your support over the years. Thank you for coming into my classroom and to so many others. Education as we know is forever changing, and you always wanted to be on the ground floor to see the accomplishments that we have made and to see the areas where we need to strive to be. Thank you for that. Leadership matters. Trusting your leaders matters. I thank you Superintendent Krieger for the trust you've given me and so many others in our district. Now it is time for a new leader. Superintendent-elect Michael Balsoni, I am thrilled and grateful that you will have this amazing opportunity to lead our district. You know our district, you know our district and have been a part of it, and have been a part of it and what it is today through all the various roles that you have given your time and countless energy to. Thank you for that. I know you value all voices and seeing, and see the amazing opportunity and the importance of working together, like Superintendent Krieger and our union president DQ and all of our members in our community. Thank you to all of you for the work you've done in 2000, in the 2023-24 school year. Another school year in the books, here we go. I wish you all well and I hope to see you in the fall. Stop on in, but those that you know me, I sing a lot in my class, so don't be surprised if I ask to do you, ask a duet from you. You never know, maybe we have some singers in this crowd, you never know. Just kidding. Thank you so much for listening and the opportunity to speak. Enjoy your summer, and I will see you at the start of the 2024-25 school year. Thank you to all of you and thank you for listening.
Thank you. Excellent. All right, next on the agenda is our consent agenda. We have 39 items on the consent agenda tonight. Getting my vocal cords warmed up. Those items include: School Board Member Employment, Appointments to the Legislative Advisory Council, District Memberships for 2024-25, Official Newspaper for 2024-25, Revised Minutes of the April 8th-2024 Special School Board Meeting, Revised Minutes of the April 13th-2024 Special School Board Meeting, Revised Minutes of the April 15th-2024 Special School Board Meeting, Revised Minutes of the April 23rd-2024 Special School Board Meeting, Minutes of the May 6th-2024 Regular School Board Meeting, Gifts, Grants, Advertising Revenue, Treasurers Report for April 2024, Summary of Claims for April 2024, Schedule of Investments for April 2024, Revenues of Expenditures Report for April 2024, Personnel Pay Rates for Substitute, Temporary Part-Time Employees, Purchase of Teach-Town Special Education Curriculum, 2024-25 CAP Agency Head Start Interagency Agreement, Special Education, Resolution with Minnesota State High School League, Employment Agreements, Employment Agreements, Probationary, Highland Elementary School and Scott Highlands Middle School, Ceiling Grid Replacement, Playground for Oak Ridge Elementary School of Leadership, Environmental and Health Services, Playground for Deerwood Elementary School, Falcon Ridge Middle School, Chiller Replacement, 2024 Building Automation System Upgrade at Apple Valley High School, Designation of Identified Official with Authority for Minnesota Department of Education External User Access Recertification System, Student Teacher Agreement with Minnesota State University, Mankato Student Teacher Agreement with Alexandria Technical and Community College, Workers Compensation Insurance, Non-Public School Counseling Services Agreement, Apple Valley High School Tennis Court Relocation, Elementary Number 20 Elevator Rebid, District-Wide Bond Projects Commissioning and Special Inspections, Termination of Non-Renewals Probationary Teachers, Driver Education Vehicle Lease, and Athletics and Event Registration and Fee Payment Services. Are there any items that a School Board Member would like to remove from the consent tonight? Do you remember all the items on consent? Seeing none, is there a motion to approve the consent as outlined?
So moved, second.
Motion by Jackie, second by Art. All those in favor of approving the consent, say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries seven to one. Next on the agenda is reports, and I would like to welcome Kaia Bruce, Director of Community Education, to the podium to go over our community education summer programs.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, and members of the Board. I'm pleased to share with you this evening how our community education team, instructors, teachers, coaches, and staff have planned fun learning opportunities for all ages this summer. We have exciting opportunities for children pre-K to grade 12, as we have 421 class sections being offered from June 10th to August 18th. Our youth program coordinators, Marisa Schrot and Assistant Amanda Schkun, are on-site this morning for the start of summer classes. They get to be on the front lines where they hear and see the excitement and joy of summer fun and learning that is taking place in and outside of our school buildings. A favorite program of the summer is Storybook Theater, which will hold two performances of each of the three plays scheduled. Kahoots is our summer correspondence math and language arts program, which is designed to help students combat summer learning loss in grades pre-K through 5. The eight-week program is a home-based, is home-based, and provides workbooks and worksheets for children to extend what they have learned during the school year. A Kahoots buddy is part of the program as well. They are like a pen pal and are a useful tool to keep students engaged and excited about the program. 726 District 196 students are registered this year. Coordinator Matt McCabe, an avid sports enthusiast, runs our high school sports camps. He has worked to bring 178 sections of sports programming for children in grades 1 through 12. These camps are run by our school district head coaches and their assistants, and currently nearly 4,000 students are enrolled. Our aquatics program coordinator, Tijia Moreau, has an exciting summer of swim lessons, certifications, and adult fitness classes planned. Currently, 1,370 students are enrolled across all of our aquatics classes. Of special interest are 12 certification classes, which will provide our program with water safety instructors and lifeguards to help address our staffing shortages. Besides high school sports camps, Matt McCabe plans quality learning opportunities for adult community members of all ages through adult summer programming. 56 classes are being offered this summer. Popular classes include fitness, many which will be held outdoors, Bob Ross painting, tennis, golf, fantasy football, and the new and very popular fused glass. Our Adult Basic Education Program just held their ABE graduation ceremony a couple of weeks ago, where 84 students received their GED or Adult Diploma. ABE manager Eric Lynn leads the growing ABE program. For the summer, he is projecting 375 students to participate in learning English, brushing up on math skills, or studying for their GED. Over the past year, ABE has increased student enrollment by over 14%. Summer classes for all programs start on July 8th. Project Explorer Coordinator Patty Vance enjoys creating and providing opportunities for adults with disabilities to connect, socialize, build friendships, and learn. Nearly 1,400 students are enrolled in summer events, which include volunteering, an adopt-a-part cleanup, and food sorting for Feed My Starving Children. Many outdoor activities are planned, as well as field trips to sporting events, a tour to the Span Museum, and the popular pool parties. Kristy Hanson, Early Childhood Family Education Assistant Administrator, is also ready for summer classes which start in July. Typical classes include time for parent-child interaction, parent education, and early childhood education. Summer session runs July 9th through August 1st. Family playtimes are set up in mid-July for parents who want to bring their children to play with other District 196 children and ECFE staff. Play is not only fun, but instructive elements are incorporated. We invite our district community to apply to be a representative on our Community Education Advisory Council. We meet five times a year and are looking for people who are committed to lifelong learning. The application is on our website at ce.district196.org. Summer is a busy and exhilarating time for community education. We are excited to be offering a wide range of activities to educate, develop, and inspire our community for lifelong success. I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Audience first. Seeing none, questions or comments from Board members? Yes, Anna?
Not a question, not a question, but a comment. As you remember, Kaia, my son and I were able to do the Advisory Council for a couple of years, and so for parents out there who are looking to get their kids engaged, it might be a nice parent or guardian activity with your student to do together. And so I highly encourage it. It was really amazing to meet with different representatives from throughout the community and learn more about what you do, and it was eye-opening for me. So, yeah, it was great.
Great, thanks, Anna.
I'm just going to add, I am a, as an avid promoter of everything that Community Ed does and a consumer of their services as well. My family and I are always very benefit, are grateful for everything Community Ed does. My kids got their Kahoots in the mail today. They were really excited to get mail until they opened it. And also, a thing that I noticed this year, I think earlier on in the year, like in March, one thing I really, really loved as a parent was when we started getting emails from Community Ed. There were links per week over the summer, where if you didn't have programming, you could select, click a button, and it would bring you to everything that Community Ed offers that week. And as a parent who's trying to plan your summer week by week, so beneficial, such a great idea to add that as well. So, thank you for the presentation and everything that Community Ed does.
Great, thank you.
Our next speaker, I would like to welcome Janet Fimmern and Kaia. You're staying up here, right? And Kaia Bruce to the podium to go over enhancing and expanding early learning.
Chairperson Johnson, members of the Board, and Superintendent Krieger, Janet Fimmern, Director of Special Education, and I are here this evening to share an update on early learning in District 196 with you. We'll begin with the rationale for early learning and the history of early learning in District 196, and move into our current reality and future plans and needs. The early years of a child's life are crucial in creating a foundation for lifelong learning and success. Research shows that early learning has positive outcomes for students. Children's brains develop rapidly, with 90% of brain development occurring before age 5. These formative years lay the cognitive and behavioral foundation for future development and learning. Strong early habits set children on a positive path, reducing the need for remedial services and increasing the likelihood of high school graduation, college and career success, and positive societal impacts. High-quality early learning programs enhance cognitive and social-emotional development. Children in these programs demonstrate improved social skills, stronger self-regulation, and reduce behavioral challenges, which are critical for success in kindergarten and beyond. These programs also prepare children for kindergarten by developing critical thinking, curiosity, creativity, language, literacy, and early math skills. This foundational knowledge equips children with the necessary tools to sustain themselves academically as they progress through school. The achievement gap begins early, with many children from low-income families starting kindergarten behind their peers. Studies show that children in the lowest economic groups begin kindergarten with academic skills 20 months behind those of children in the top-income category. Limited access to early care and, early care and education contributes to these inequalities. To raise achievement and close gaps, it is imperative to focus on early learning. Studies estimate that every $1 invested in high-quality early childhood programs yields a $4 to $16 return. Over the past eight years, the state legislature has increased funding for programs like early childhood family education, school readiness, voluntary pre-K, and pathway scholarships, all which support our Connections preschool program. In this latest session, legislators funded early learning for an additional 5,200 students District 196 community education has offered half-day preschool for three- and four-year-olds at the Early Childhood Learning Center and an elementary school that had space at the time.
time, to all students across the district, but required families to provide their own transportation. These classrooms included students with disabilities learning alongside their peers in a least restrictive environment. In 2012, the first preschool targeting students from their specific attendance area with midday transportation opened at Echo Park Elementary, marking the start of our preschool expansion in District 196. This expansion aligned with our strategic plan, which prioritized early learning. The Early Learning Strategic Plan Committee aimed to align instruction, ensure a consistent learning environment, support teacher and administrator effectiveness, and focus on data-driven improvement. We rebranded our preschool programs as Connections preschool, aligned our curriculum with K3, and implemented an assessment tool for differentiated and effective instruction. Over the years, as space has become available, we have expanded four-year-old preschool in elementary schools, growing from just two sections in 2012 to 29 sections today. Of these, 12 elementary schools host their attendance area students. Three host their attendance area students at another school due to space constraints, and three do not host preschool. All classrooms include general and special education students. Those students receiving special ed services attend at a variety of sites, which may not be their attendance school. While expanding from two sections in one elementary school to 29 sections in 12 elementary schools over 12 years is progress, we are still behind comparable districts. On average, these districts serve 40% of their four-year-olds and 14% of their three-year-olds, while our Connections preschool program serves only 20% of our four-year-olds and 5% of three-year-olds. Our goal is to serve 50% of four-year-olds and 25% of three-year-olds. This demand for our program is evident in our waitlist numbers. As of May 30th, there are 209 students on the waitlist for Connections preschool, a number that typically doubles by the start of the school year. This highlights the need to further expand our programming.
Thank you, Kaya. As you can see on this graph, we are also seeing a significant growth in the number of students being identified as needing early childhood special education services. In the last 10 years, we have 200 additional students, which is a 30% increase. Note that these students, or this data is birth through age five, and Kaya's data that she shared was just three and four-year-olds. In addition to this growth, the needs of our students are more complex, and in order to best meet the unique needs of our students, it is critical to have programs, ECFE programs and ECSE programs have alignment, so we are able to provide the most robust support to our students. We also have lack, we also are lacking our ability to provide inclusive opportunities for our students, due to the lack of capacity. Additionally, we would like to serve more students who are receiving special education services in their homeschool. So, this work of this committee, I'm going to start by reading the charge statement of the committee. "In a collaborative effort, the Early Childhood Family Services, Early Childhood Special Education Services, and elementary primary staff, as well as principals and directors, will be collectively reviewing early learning curriculum and educational materials. This review will encompass social-emotional learning, academic achievement, and equity, all grounded in research. We will identify beliefs, practices, and resources that effectively accommodate the diverse developmental and learning needs of every child, while fostering a strong partnership with families. This collaborative work will begin this summer. We will work together to review and reaffirm our district's early learning mission, vision, beliefs, and best practices, and agreed-upon outcomes for all students. The review will also consider the alignment with our, the district's achievement priorities of well-being, academic achievement, equity, and resources. Given the evolving needs of our students, growth in our programs, and the need for alignment, this review will offer data around our current reality, as well as necessary action needed moving, moving forward. Our goal is to enhance and better align early learning programs in District 196 by researching and identifying the beliefs and practices that contribute to long-term success for all students, families, and staff. We look forward to sharing findings from the summer, work, and welcoming feedback from various stakeholders this fall, which will help to inform action steps moving forward." Now, I will open it up for questions and comments from the board.
Comments from the audience tonight? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Go ahead, Anna.
More complex needs. Can you just provide an example, or not example, but kind of a summary of what some of those needs you're seeing as a trend?
We're seeing more students qualify in the area of ASD, autism, with needs around communication, alternate communication, alternative communication devices. So, they need a higher student-to-staff support ratio, dysregulation, social-emotional needs. So, just a higher number of students needing a more contained placement. So, that's what I've referenced there. But I would say along the full continuum, the complexity of even students being identified in the category of speech, we're just seeing different, more unique needs.
And I don't know if it was you or Kaya that returned on that investment for early, what was that percentage or dollar amount? Do you have that in your notes?
Yeah, it was $1 for, for every $1 invested, returned $4 to $16.
$4 to $16. Okay, thank you.
Sachin.
I'm trying to articulate my thoughts here. Of all the areas that I feel, we have the greatest opportunity within this. We often talk about the achievement gap and everything that we have tried, you know, and the, our goal to bring in teachers of color in the classrooms. This is perhaps the most under-levered pathway to fixing the achievement gap, in my opinion. This is beyond an ROI conversation. This is a conversation of access to opportunity and equity. I, I can't stress more my desire to move the narrative from as space becomes available to make space available. We, we can't be comfortable with the lack of opportunities we're providing our kids. I am, I'm so happy to see the pathway to 5025, but we need the when, and we need the framework of the how. I, I, I am, this is going to be just my personally, that I will put a lot of my heart and my soul and my focus to support each of you as you go down this path. But we can't take a passive approach on this, and the next time we see this, we have to demand these numbers change. So, I'd love for the committee to think about, put us on spot and say, okay, you want this? This is how we get this, because that's why we're elected to do. We're elected to be advocates for this. And so, to me, I would love to find ways on how we can be more aggressive. I mean, this is impacting kids of color disproportionately. And so, whatever we can do to support this, we've got to do that. And I'm happy to see we're moving. I just want to see us move as fast as we responsibly can. Thank you.
I appreciate those comments. I think we would echo those, those thoughts and agree the urgency is there. It's now.
Thank you.
Jackie?
You can't agree with Sachin more than what he's already said. If we have 290 now on a waitlist, you said it probably might double by the time school starts. That's 600 kids that are waiting for space. And hopefully, we can provide space. I've loved all the things you've talked about, and I agree with Sachin. This is our day-to-day. Let's find a way to make this happen. And I'm sure, you know, you know space issues. You have people that are out here that know space issues and can help you with that. And let's hope that we can move the needle on this, so we don't have 600 kids at the time the school starts. That's the biggest call that I get from people. Do you have any pull? Can you get my kid into preschool? I'm like, ah, nope, we can't, but good luck to you. I mean, apply and talk to, to you, but I agree. This is our, this has to be our number one project to get moving on. Thank you.
Skouting.
Wanted to say thank you, that we're looking into this is really motivating, and this is issue that we should have looked before, but nevertheless, it's just that right now we're looking at it is really, you know, motivating itself. The thing also that we're looking at is scholarship and also sliding, you know, sliding fee scale in that for the expansion is really also something that's good. Your presentation, you know, clearly points us out and provides a very good, you know, comparative analysis to how the district lacks. So, it really justifies, provides a good justification. So, I cannot wait to see what you find out and the feedback that you get, that, you know, I'm really happy that we're looking into this. I mean, also, Anna pointed out that the, you know, I'm glad she asked that. Clearly, you know, the return is investment is right there. So, we move in a good direction, but I cannot wait to see what you find out, the feedback that you bring back. So, thank you.
Thanks.
Leah.
I won't repeat the really smart comments that have already been made about the importance of this. So, just, I'll say agreed and underscore it. And just a couple questions, I guess. So, I see and I, I expect there was a lot of thought into who the membership would be. And I, and I notice it doesn't include parents, and I, but I do see that you also have, you know, you're looking at pathways for more feedback from the public. So, curious, you know, just kind of what went into your thought there, what you might be able to offer at this stage if there are parents that would like to provide input. And, you know, sort of just back to, I guess I'm gonna repeat one thing that Sachin said, that is this, you know, this is a real equity issue. So, making sure that we're reflecting the communities most impacted by the inequity right now in getting that input. So, we, you know, even knowing we have brilliant teachers, principals, and district staff, how do we reflect those that most need these services in building it? Would be one question, if you care to comment, or just, you know, something to consider. The other is just, you know, if there's any room for a community partnership. I think we have amazing community partners here that also believe in our young children, and I just wonder if there might, you know, if that could be part of the solution, the space solution. I don't know, but just throwing out there that there may be external partners that also want to support our youngest learners.
Absolutely, and thanks for that. I think we are, we just wanted you to be aware of the work. We're just starting the work, so we hope that this summer we'll collect some information to answer the questions you brought up. I agree, and we absolutely will definitely engage parents along the process. We just really wanted, we wanted this, we wanted collaboration, so needing elementary principals on board, directors on board, EFE and SE on board. So, that's where we started, but I'm sure it will grow, and we'll get more clarity as we bring that team together and move forward. So, what we anticipate is hopefully in the fall, we'll have another update on where we're at, where the team's at, and where we're going. So, thanks for that. Those are great ideas.
Other questions or comments? Anna again?
Final thing. One of my kids actually benefited from ECFE and from the summer program. And I cannot say enough about that. As a parent who was struggling with how to best serve, and working with professionals who knew what to do, and my job was to care and love my child, and leaning on professionals who know how to engage my child and how to help me work within the system to get those resources that were needed. And so, I, I just, it was the best thing that could have happened for me and my child, and whatever we can do to expand that, totally supportive of.
Just add, I think there's one thing anyone from the community or your team gets out of this. It's pretty good support from the school board and the work that you're doing. I think we hear that loud and clear. The only thing I wanted to add too is, I loved some of the numbers you had, especially around 290 currently on the waitlist, that could probably double before the school year starts. Just to add, I, I would, I would guess and theorize that the actual number of students in need is double, triple, or quadruple that. I hear from families all the time that don't even bother to register, because they know there's no chance, because of how big the waitlist is. So, I think when we can start serving that and getting that done, we'll see the actual need be much higher than the waitlist numbers even too.
Yeah, and what happens with those families is they show up day one of school and need a lot of support. So, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Next on the agenda, I would like to welcome Tony Taschner and Ally Guerin to the podium to go over 2024 Legislative Session Review.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board. Here we are again, the third-time legislative report in the last six months. So, we'll try and keep it brief. Ally and I are here to give a review of the 2024 session of the Minnesota Legislature, which, as many of us saw and read about, ended memorably at midnight on Sunday, May 19th. I'm gonna start by quickly going through our district priorities for the 2024 Legislative Session and seeing how we did. Our overarching theme for the 24th session was for lawmakers to slow down, stop approving new mandates, and support implementation of the many laws approved during what DFL lawmakers called a historic session for education in 2023. And we, and we certainly were supportive and thankful for a lot of that legislation, but did want to have help supporting that implementation. So, in keeping with that theme, our first of three priorities was to review, adjust, and support implementation of new laws. There were many of them, but we focused on three: the REED Act, unemployment insurance, and school safety as it relates to the issue involving school resource officers. The REED Act gets a big checkmark, because this is where most of the additional funding went, as Ally will tell us about in a few minutes. In addition to more funding, we were also asking for additional time and/or flexibility to complete the required teacher training to implement the new literacy curriculum. There was also a small win here, as the, as the state made a small reduction in the instructional hours requirement for next year to accommodate time for more training. No checkmark for unemployment insurance. Here, we were asking legislators to broaden the definition of like positions from the regular school year to summer. There was no change in language there, and legislators, legislators did not identify an ongoing source of funding to support unemployment insurance after the now-two-year set aside of funds is gone. This will certainly be an item again next session. And I'll just add, because of the, the language issue and unemployment insurance, we did have to schedule our summer programming this year. We just condensed it, having it at the beginning of the, of the summer, as a way that we, to ensure that we had enough employees to run the programs. It would not have been the way that we would necessarily have done it, but, but that was, that was the option that we chose. Lastly, in this section, is school safety and the change in law in 2023 that resulted in school resource officers being pulled from schools all across Minnesota at the start of this past school year, including our district for a few days. Thankfully, additional guidance from the Attorney General served to satisfy concerns about liability temporarily, and SROs returned to our schools for the rest of the year, knowing a long-term solution was still needed. We didn't have to wait too long to check this box, as the legislature approved the law change during the first week of the session, thanks to a lot of work done by law enforcement representatives and legislators last fall, including some of our legislators who were very involved with that. So, I want to thank them for that. The second legislative priority for our district this session was to provide additional funding for inflation, equalization, and compensatory needs. As you can see, none of the, none of the funding boxes are checked here. Under General Education Formula, we were asking for an additional 2% increase on top of the 2% already approved for next year, simply to provide some relief for high inflation. We're gonna lose ground again with, with 4% and 2% over the, over the last year, or this year, and next year. The General Ed formula is the biggest single source of funding that school districts receive each year. So, even with the historic funding of the 23 session, since 2023... So even with the historic funding of the 23 session, since 2003, so we're going back to when the general ed levy was eliminated. The general education formula allowance has lagged inflation by more than $1,300 per student, or almost 19% of the current amount per pupil. So again, lots of funding in the 23 session going to education, but one session is not going to fix a 20-year, 20 years of unfunding. So that'll continue next year as a budgeting session, we'll be back there asking for significant increases again to general education formula. Equalization aid is something we're always going to ask for because it's simply a taxpayer fairness issue and, and our taxpayers are on the wrong side of that issue. There was however, no additional equalization aid this session. In the area of compensatory funding, we were asking legislators to continue to provide previous levels of compensatory funding known as whole harmless. They did agree to this, so I guess we should actually have about a half a checkmark on, on this box. We were also however, asking them to identify a new measure of poverty for determining compensatory funding going forward. Now that school meals are free for all students, families don't have the same incentive to fill out the form for educational benefits, which was the form that they used to sign out for free meals. So we need to find a, a different solution for that, for the compensatory funding. Our third and final priority during the 24th session was to increase local control and reduce mandates. This is one we see often as well. Unfortunately, none of the boxes on this slide are checked either. Under local authority, we were and will continue to ask legislators to give you, the locally-elected school board, authority to renew one-time a capital projects levy for up to 10 years. In 2023, the legislature, after many years of, of lobbying, changed the law to give boards the authority to renew an operating levy one time for up to 10 years. The rationale for this is because straight referendum renewal elections, whether it's a levy referendum, an operating levy referendum, or a capital projects levy referendum in this case. The approval percentage is extremely high. In fact, since 2017, there have been 23 capital projects referendum renewals in Minnesota and all 23 have been approved, many with overwhelming majorities. We weren't successful with this request this year, but will be asking again next session. If we do not get this authority from the legislature, the district will need to consider conducting a capital projects referendum by the end of 2025, so as not to have a gap in funding for the mission-critical technology that the capital projects levy supports. Nothing happened again with our ongoing request to reduce special education paperwork. And lastly, we were asking for $6 million in the state bonding bill to help fund needed renovations at the Apple Valley Sports Arena, which the school district and city of Apple Valley operate as partners. Our funding request, we were told, or what we, we knew was in the governor's proposal, but the bonding bill did not get approved. So we were certainly hoping for, for more things on our list this year, but that's what the scorecard shows after the 24th session ended. So with that, I'm gonna turn it over to Ally and she'll talk about some additional things that did happen this session.
Thank you, Tony. So first, I'd like to discuss the education finance bill, which includes $43 million in supplemental funding for the 2425 fiscal year. A significant portion of this funding is designated, oops, to one-time expenses, particularly for training and curriculum related to the implementation of the REED Act. Our district is set to receive just over 1 million of the 31 million allocated statewide for these specific needs. While we are grateful for the financial support, it's important that the public understands that many costs associated with the REED Act implementation will remain unfunded over the next two to three years. Additionally, the legislator increased funding, legislature, excuse me, to expand the number of voluntary pre-kindergarten seats from just over 7,000 to 12,360 annually, and has provided ongoing funding to make these seats permanent. Currently, our district receives state funding for 70 preschool scholarships, and we are in the process of determining if we can apply for additional seats under this new provision. Finally, the legislature has allocated more than $7 million to a group of seven school districts as part of a compensatory pilot program that was initiated in 2005. This program provides additional funding to districts serving large numbers of students living in poverty. We believe District 196 could benefit from this additional funding, and the Legislative Advisory Council will be exploring opportunities for us to join this pilot program, so we can secure more resources for our students. Also new this year is the requirement for school districts to adopt a school cellphone policy by March 15th, 2025. District 196 does address the use of cellphones in our Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook, but we will look closely at best practices that will be provided by the Minnesota Elementary School Principals Association and the Minnesota Association of Secondary School Principals to see if any revisions need to be made. There was also a change in state health academic standards. Health standards will now be shifted from being locally developed to statewide academic standards, with local health standards remaining in place until statewide standards are ready to be implemented into health classrooms. And in the 2627 school year, districts will be mandated to include mental health instruction as part of their curriculum. We will explore how to expand our existing initiatives and integrate new strategies to enhance the mental health education we have for our students. In addition to this, there will be new provisions for mental health-related absences and telehealth appointments. Students will now be able to be excused for absences due to mental health appointments conducted via telehealth, and schools will be required to provide access to a private and suitable space for these telehealth sessions. In addition to the changes I already mentioned, we have more. New legislation stipulates that public libraries in Minnesota must not ban, remove or otherwise restrict access to books or other materials based solely on its viewpoint, messages, ideas or the opinions it conveys. And librarians may not be terminated or discriminated against for complying with this statute. Library governing boards, including school boards, must adopt a policy that establishes procedures for selection of, challenges to and reconsideration of library materials. In District 196, we do already have policies and regulations in place that satisfy these requirements. During this session, another significant mandate was introduced, requiring all school districts to develop a board-approved language access plan. A language access plan is designed to ensure that non-English speaking families can access critical information and services in their preferred language. At District 196, we have proactively developed a language access plan and regulation. But currently, this document serves as an internal guide for our staff that outlines the services available to families in District 196. The new legislation aims to make these plans accessible to the public, so we are prepared to revise our plan accordingly and will present the updated version to the board for approval. Finally, I'd like to highlight a development in support of our future educators. As part of the education finance bill, the legislature appropriated $6.5 million for our student teaching stipend pilot program. The program is designed to provide financial stipends to student teachers placed in Minnesota schools during the 2425 school year. Eight teacher preparation programs will benefit from this funding, helping alleviate some of the financial burdens associated with student teaching. And last but not least, we want to thank members of the Legislative Advisory Council for their time and commitment to our advocacy efforts this year. We also want to thank our legislators and state leaders for their service, and we look forward to continuing our work together next session. Thank you all for your attention tonight. That concludes our presentation. If you have questions, we would be happy to take them.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none questions or comments from school board members. Leah.
Question for Tony, and I promise it's not even on compensatory revenue. On the unemployment insurance, I recall at one point in dialogues as we were asking for this broadening, the definition of like positions, that they, that it came to light that maybe there's a matter of what was the legislative intent versus how that is being interpreted? I don't know if you recall this, if you don't, we can table it for later, but I was just wondering if there was any progress on squaring those two. If the legislative intent wasn't as rigid as how our district, or I'm not sure about others, are defining like positions? If there's room there outside of, you know, policy change, maybe it's administrative conversation to clarify if we're interpreting correctly?
I didn't, in the, in the reviews that I've been a part of and, and listening, we didn't really get into that level of detail in terms of what level of, or what discussion may have happened. I don't know if that may have some, been something that the HR directors or other professional organizations may have talked about. So, but we'll certainly look into that and follow up with it.
Yeah, happy to connect dots if that's helpful. Yep.
Sure.
Go ahead.
Oh, it's always interesting to me what they've decided to talk about, what they decide is important and blessings to them because I know they get all kinds of information from all kinds of people. So not too bad. I mean, some of the things that we asked for were good. The one thing I want to talk a little bit about is the school safety and the SROs. And I'm glad that our district was kind of in the forefront of that, talking about our, talking to our students, if that was important to them. They all seemed to say it was very important to them. And so I'm glad that they got that figured out. I was lucky enough to be at Rosemont High School for their walk-through, for their graduation. Rosemont High School students walk up to Rosemont Middle, walk through Rosemont Middle, greet all their teachers and walk through Rosemont Elementary and greet all their teachers. And it's about enough to make you have to use tissues, because my eyes were leaking. But I was standing next to Officer Brian Larson, Orion, Brian Larson.
Larson, yeah.
From Rosemont, from Rosemont. And he was the officer of the year for the state of Minnesota. And I was surprised, I was surprised and heartened by how many people, how many students, graduating students came up and gave him high fives, gave him hugs. Hey Larson! And it was just about every other kid, they were, they were as excited to see him as they were some of their other teachers. So I think that says a lot about the quality of, of officers that we get here in 196 and how we can support them. And I hope that message went to St. Paul of why, that this is why this is important to us. It may not be as important to other school districts, but for us, it's important and our kids like that. And it's a, it's a great thing for us. So I'm glad that they fixed that, so congratulations to them.
Yeah, absolutely. No, we've, I've been real proud of our district in terms of how we've approached the SRO issue, you know, back to the George Floyd murder and in the wake of that. And, and some districts made very knee-jerk reactions, I would, I would say, decisions on that. We, we were more calculated. We did have concerns, we did address those concerns over time and working with the departments. And I think we're in a much better place and I, and I think.
Right.
It shows, I think the public is, is happy that we're, that we're supporting and working with our police officers. And like you said, the survey shows, and it's not just in District 196, it is across the state. Over 90% of students are very supportive of having SROs in their schools.
Thank you, Corey. Before I ask my question, because the basis of my question is based on this data point I heard, so I don't, I want to make sure I heard it correctly. Ally, did you say that the REED Act unlocked $31 million and we got one of those million dollars? Is that what you just said?
That's correct.
So this is my question then. So that is about 3% of the funding that we got, 1 million of 31 million approximately. But we represent 5% of all students in the state of Minnesota. So to me, that math says that we were 60% disproportionately funded. We left $600,000 on the table, which is 5% of 31 million dollars. Why did we not get that incremental $600,000 and why were we disproportionately funded for that?
I would have to turn to a finance, Mary, do you know that, Mary?
Are you referencing the extra?
The additional funding for the REED Act, yes.
Additional funding was per pupil. I think it was around $40 or something per pupil.
Yep, just under $40 per pupil.
I'm getting the nod, okay.
And we don't have to forget it, but my, I mean, I think.
You're saying 5% is the.
The per pupil math is now, is now making sense to me, right? Because if we represent 5% of the population of students, we should represent 5% of the funding that came with the per pupil formula. So it'll be good just to kind of follow up to see why exactly were we underfunded by 60% of what we ought to be owed if the formula was a per pupil basis?
Yeah, and I, I guess I would hesitate to say that we were under, underfunded at this point because I maybe haven't presented the information that need to, to clarify that. But I'll certainly look into that as to why. I, I haven't heard anybody in our district raise concerns about that level of funding. It's, it's been out there for a while and nor did I hear anything, again, in the presentations that we heard at AMSD or, or C on that. So, but I definitely will look into that.
Okay, thank you.
Oh, Superintendent Krieger.
So I just want to make a comment. We are really, we were grateful that the legislators came up with this extra funding because it really is looking at our administration, working closely with our teachers' union to determine a memo of understanding of how we are going to distribute this extra funds. And I think it's, it's helpful because all of our teachers are learned, they're lifelong learners. Every year, they have a large load to get ready for that year to make sure they're implementing standards and the latest in pedagogy and research. But this year, for our elementary teachers and anybody who's teaching literacy, that cognitive load is huge. And so I think it's a way that the legislators were recognizing the cognitive load on top of everything else you're doing needs some, and it'll be minimal, nobody's going to have a different lifestyle, but it's some recognition that you are being asked to do above and beyond what in our, my years as an educator, I don't know that we've ever had this widespread, deep change coming toward us. So it's exciting, but it's also nice that we have a little bit of something to help our teachers out.
Any other questions or comments from board members?
I'll just end by saying, every single time I talk, I talk with legislators a lot, and every single time I talk to them, I am always hearing how much they pay attention to you and our students and our family members when they're at the Capitol and advocating for some of these changes. So thank you in the LAC for all the work that you're doing because they are listening and they are making a difference.
Thank you. We appreciate it.
All right, that brings us to our old business portion of the agenda. And I would like to welcome Jill Coyle to the podium to go over our second reading of the overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities Handbook.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, members of the board and Superintendent Krieger. I am here on Old Business with our 2425 overview of student rights and responsibilities. This was before you as New Business in May, and tonight I'm here for your approval. First, just a reminder on what the overview of student rights and responsibilities is for the benefit of the audience. Essentially, it's a student and family handbook. It contains a summary of a number of laws and policies pertaining to student rights and responsibilities, variety of topics including data practices, harassment, discrimination, student discipline, health and safety and much, much more. So in terms of the changes for the coming year, the 2425 school year, the most common sort of change that we see in our rights and responsibilities book this year are law and policy changes. So you may recall the 2023 legislature had a great variety of changes to the law affecting school districts. We got those infused into our various policies and regulations over the course of the year, and now we're doing catch-up with our, with our handbook, making sure that those same policy and law changes are reflected there. Again, lots of topics from data practices, health and safety, student discipline is a big one. The other big change that we're recommending this year relates to the way we categorize the various student behaviors. So as you look through the book, the whole center of the book is a listing of different types of student behaviors, and there's 46 of them. What we've done this year is to categorize them into seven broad categories, sort of umbrellas that go over the individual behaviors, and that is to allow better reference for families and administrators. There are a couple of changes that I've made since it came to you as New Business. One of them did come as a result of a 2024 legislative change. And so let me read that to you. It relates to our attendance language in the book. There was a change made by the legislature to make it clear that a student may be excused from a curricular activity for an American Indian cultural practice, observance or ceremony. So that's been added into our book for the coming year. And then in addition to that, I also updated the statewide testing form that can be found at the end of the handbook. I'll also remind you that one big change this year is we're moving to an electronic format rather than a printed book that comes home to all of our families. There was a question last time in terms of what did we spend on that last year? And so we did a little bit of research. It was a little over $50,000. And so we're looking forward to saving quite a bit of that. There'll still be some printing costs because we will still have some paper copies at our schools, but should still be a, a big savings. And then we'll make sure that all of our families understand how to electronically access the book. With that, I don't have anything further for you, so I offer to you for your approval the. the 2425 Overview of Student Rights and Responsibilities.
Thank you. This is an action item for us tonight, so before I move to questions, is there a motion to approve?
Moved.
Second.
Motion by Suchin, second by Leah. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? I just can't let it go to a vote without saying how thrilled I am that we were able to move to an electronic copy, um, this year. I think that's great, great savings, and I know to people, anyone watching it, might seem like a no brainer, oh, stop printing, move to electronic, but there's actually quite a bit of research that goes into that to make sure we can, we're still getting the right notices out in time, so thank you for all the research the team did, um, to be able to provide that cost savings back to the district and to be a little bit more environmentally friendly with our paper as well. Absolutely. Um, we have a motion to approve by Suchin, second by Leah. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Thank you. All right, next on the agenda is our New Business portion, and I would like to welcome Danny Duchene to the podium to go over our 202425 preliminary budget.
Good evening, Chair Johnson, Superintendent Krieger, members of the board, and our District 196 community. My name is Danny Duchene, Coordinator of Finance for District 196. Tonight, District Administration presents the 202425 preliminary budget for a first reading and review. The 202425 preliminary budget will be presented for a second reading and recommended approval at the Board's June 24th meeting. Included in your board packet tonight is a draft of the 202425 preliminary budget book in all 186 pages of glory, which has been developed in accordance with the standards of the ASBO Meritorious Budget Award, which the district has received for the past nine years. Tonight's information that I'll go over in this presentation is a high-level summary of all the details provided in the budget book. After the anticipated approval of the budget at the June 24th meeting, the budget book will be published online on our District Finance page for the public to consume. Before diving into this evening's budget content, I'd like to take a moment just to acknowledge a few groups of people who were involved in helping develop this budget. A special thank you goes out to our district administrators, principals, and their teams for the time and hard work they put in to helping us develop this budget. Members of our finance team, specifically Christopher and Kim Woods, for their support of not only me, but our district budget managers during this cycle, and their assistance in helping develop this budget book. And finally, we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge our talented, incredible elementary students who provided the, the awesome artwork that brings this budget book to life. Tonight, we're going to stop and, and talk about four key areas. We're going to ground ourselves in our district strategic roadmap, our mission, vision, core values, and our strategic priorities. We'll do a quick review of our budget cycle, we'll talk about the people in our district, and then we'll dive into the district's financials. Whenever we present our district budget, it's really important us, for us to ground ourselves in our why. Last June, the board approved the district's new strategic roadmap, and while I'm not going to go into details into all of the four different sections of the strategic roadmap, I just wanted to bring it to the forefront of our minds as we talk about the various types of budgets, expenditures, revenues. Let's keep our mission, vision, core values, and priorities at the forefront of our thinking and let it serve as our compass tonight. A quick overview of the budget cycle that we go through every single year. So each full budget cycle has five critical steps. The 202425 cycle began with the board's certification of the 23-page 24 levy this past December. We currently find ourselves at the second step, the preliminary budget stage. The preliminary budget utilizes a couple of key pieces of information that the board took action on in the past year. Enrollment projections that were presented to the board in November for the 202425 school year, budget parameters and school allocations, which the board took action on in January. State law requires school districts to approve a preliminary budget by June 30th of every school year for the following school year. Our 202425 cycle will continue with the final budget this fall. At that point, we'll transition from using enrollment projections for the budget to October 1st enrollment actual counts, and it'll conclude next spring with our spring budget adjustments and our annual financial audit next summer. Education is a people-based industry, okay? So it's really important that we acknowledge all the different patrons that are involved in our district and in our budget. So for the 202425 preliminary budget, we're basing off enrollment projections, as I mentioned, the school board approved in November of 2023. For the 2425 school year, the district projected an October 1st enrollment count of 28,805, with a split of approximately 33% of those students at the high school level, 23% at the middle school level, and 41% at the elementary level. The budget book contains information for just over 3,900 full-time FTEs or regular staff FTEs in the preliminary budget, which isn't a lot, which is aligned with FTE staffing levels, um, from the 2324 school year. Now let's transition into talking about the, the district's financials and our budget. Before we talk about numbers, let's do a quick review of the different funds of the district just to ground ourselves in some of the terminology that you're going to hear. The general fund is the district's main operating fund and will account for the majority of both revenues and expenditures. The general fund has five primary sub-accounts. We have our main operating accounts, special education, transportation, Q comp, and operating capital. The general fund has a combination of restricted and unrestricted fund balances at the end of every single year. The nutrition services account, fund account is for all the revenues and expenditures for the district's nutrition program for school breakfasts, school breakfast and lunch programs primarily. This is a self-sustaining and restricted fund. The Community Education Fund records financial activity for district-provided community programs for all type of district patrons, from early childhood programs to adult basic education and community rec programs for all ages, as you heard Kaia reference here early this evening. Similar to the Nutrition Services Fund, the Community Education Fund is a self-sustaining fund where fund balances are restricted only for community education activities. The Building Construction Fund is where the district records activities for major construction projects, such as the bond project voters approved in May of 2023. The Debt Service Fund is the fund the district accumulates resources in the form of property taxes to pay the principal and interest, um, payments and obligations for our long-term debt. Our internal service funds, the district has three of them, this includes the revenues and expenditures for our severance account, our self-insured dental plan, and our self-insured health insurance plan. And finally, the, the district has one fiduciary fund, which are, which is our OPEB Irrevocable Trust Fund. Diving into some of the numbers, let's go 30,000 feet up and just look at all funds across, um, or revenues across all funds. In the next couple of slides, you're going to see a comparison between the 2324 final budget and the 2425 preliminary budget. The 2425 preliminary budget will be the blue bars on the next few graphs. Total revenues for the 2425 preliminary budget are $645.3 million. The largest share of revenue comes from the general fund at 49, 493.7 million, which accounts for about 76.5%. We will see significant revenue increases expected in the Internal Services Fund due to health, due to increases in health insurance premiums collected from both the district contributions and employee contributions. We'll also see an increase in revenue in the Regular Debt Service Fund as the district begins to receive funds to pay for the obligations for the 2023 building bond referendum. One thing to note, you'll notice a very large decrease in revenue in the Building Construction Fund from 2324 to 2425. The reason for that is during the 2324 school year, the district received the first rounds of proceeds from bond sales to fund the construction projects. That's not an every-year revenue receipt. Um, so the second round of, of bonds, bond proceeds will happen during the 2526 school year, so we'll see another jump when that budget comes forward. Staying 30,000 feet up in the air, we're going to shift over to the expenditure side of the equation. Um, total expenditures budgeted right now in the preliminary budget for the district is $753.5 million. The largest share once again comes from the general fund at 506 million, or 67.3%. The second largest is the Building Construction Fund, projected at 100.3 million, or 13.3%. We're on the converse of the revenue side of the, uh, the Building Construction Fund now, where we received the proceeds last year when we were in the very early stages of planning for the projects. The 2425 school year is going to be the year where more projects start to get planned out, we begin construction on a lot of different projects, and so we're going to see our expenditures go up. Other considerable, considerable increases on the expense side include internal services funds, primarily due to the rising costs of healthcare expenses and the plans needs to pay claims and administrative costs. And the Debt Service Fund will see an increase as the district begins to pay interest obligations for the 2023 building bond referendum obligations. Overall, none of these increases on the expense side are unexpected. If we dive into the general fund and take a closer look at our district's main operating fund, the total general fund budget revenue amount is $493.7 million. The district anticipates nearly 72% of its general fund revenue from the state of Minnesota, which includes the 2% increase in the general education funding formula from the 200, or from the 202324 level that Tony referenced just a few moments ago. Nearly 25% of the general fund revenue will come from, is projected to come from property taxes. Federal sources and other revenue sources comprise the remaining revenue components at 2.1 and 1.7%, respectively. One thing to note, the last few years, we've been talking a lot about COVID federal funding and when that, the quote-unquote fiscal cliff is going to come. The district projects to exhaust all federal COVID funding at the end of the current 202324 school year, so that's the primary reason we're seeing a decrease in federal sources on this slide between the two years. Now if we look at a cross-section of the general fund expenditures by program classification, this is an opportunity where we can connect our budget book directly back to our strategic roadmap. So many of the concepts, so many of the lines in that strategic roadmap centered around the instruction, growth, and the development of students. Student instruction comprises 67.5% of the general fund preliminary budget. Additionally, student support services such as transportation, social, social work, and counseling services attribute 16.4%. This means that nearly 84% of our general fund expenditures are going directly to student, student-centered programming, aligning our budget directly with our strategic roadmap. We take a different cross-section of the general fund and look at the expenditures by object code, and for those that don't know, the object code is really kind of the what are we buying? Salaries, wages, and benefits account for 82.8% of all budgeted expenditures in the general fund, making personnel expenses the largest object category. So when we really talk about people being critical, we're spending more than $8 of every $10 on our people, our staffs that are directly teaching our students. All other expenditure categories, such as supplies and contracted services, are slightly lower and very comparable to the 2324 school year. If we zoom out and take a look at high level at projected fund balances at the end of the 2425 school year, the general fund, we have $493 million in revenues against $506 million in budgeted expenditures, resulting in an ending, ending projected fund balance at the end of the 2425 school year of 75.3 million, which is a fund balance percentage of 14.9%. The district anticipates a 2425 ending fund balance of 11.5 million in the Nutrition Services Fund, 3.9 million in the Community Service Fund, for fund balance percentages of 57.0% and 36.9%, respectively. And you can see all the other district funds are shown here on this slide for the projected fund balances at the end of next school year. Overall, the district anticipates a June 20, June 30th, 2025 total fund balance of $370 million. It is important to note that $200 million of that is reserved for the Building Construction What I love about this time of year is really the anticipation of a new school year and all the opportunities that lie ahead. Review and approval of the preliminary budget isn't just a finance process that's required by state law. It's an action that connects our students, staff members, and community to the resources that make those opportunities possible, both the measurable and the immeasurable. Think about what could happen next year. How many meals will we serve? What will our graduation rate be? Where will, where will our students experience the most growth? Physically, emotionally, intellectually? How many friendships and relationships will form next year that seemed improbable at some point in the past? And how many of our staff and students will have accomplishments and experiences they never thought possible? This is a time of hope, excitement, expectations, some uncertainty, and optimism. Every school year is a collection of stories and memories, and these budget numbers simply represent the people, places, and things that will bring those incredible stories and memories to life. So respectfully, it is our recommendation of the school board to review the 202425 preliminary budget and approve the budget at the June 24th school board meeting. At this time, if there are any questions, I'd be happy to take those.
Thank you. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Jackie?
Thank you for all your hard work. I don't have a specific question, and I love leaving it with the hope and optimism and expectation and excitement and stories, and I mean, just getting done with graduations, and we see all of these emotions on faces of graduates, whether it be uncertainty or hope, or their journey, or memories, or growth, and thanks, that was really kind of nice, that was a nice way to end it, and thank you for the rest of the numbers.
Thank you.
That didn't look too bad.
Other questions or comments? It's Caden.
I think I can add to it in a way that, to see that, how you tie it back to our priorities and the strategic invigils that we've put in place. So really happy and thrilled to see that 82% we spend on a student-centric, uh, you know, between student support, learning support, and also just to see instructions. Combined those two, that's what we're all about, so really happy to see that we put in a good amount of our budget in that way, so an expenditure reflects that, so that's a really reassuring in a way that we are 196 because we care about education and learning, so thanks.
Thank you. Anna, did you have a question? I thought I saw your hand up. No?
No.
Okay. Other questions or comments? Awesome. Thank you, Danny. We will see you in about two weeks.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, I'd like to welcome Jill Coyle back to the podium to go over Policy 801: District Community Relations.
Once again, good evening. Um, I am here tonight with New Business Policy 801, that is our policy titled District Community Relations. Uh, this is a policy that describes many aspects of the school district's community relations, including its community listening sessions. So background for the audience, community listening sessions are gatherings that give district stakeholders an opportunity to share concerns directly with between one and three school board members. The sessions are held monthly as long as at least one stakeholder signs up in advance to speak. Since these sessions were first launched back in 2021, they've proven to be a valuable way for, to connect our school board members with our community members. Tonight, I am with you, before you, with a small proposed change. The administration seeks to strike the requirement in Section 1.2.3 that sessions be held at district schools on a rotating basis. The administration seeks the change in order to host sessions at the district office while also having flexibility to host them at schools as appropriate. This is a review item tonight, and will come back as Old Business later this month, June 24th. I'm happy to answer any questions that you may have at this time.
The board, are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, Anna?
Well, um, I like that we're doing it in one location because it does get confusing, but also is there going to be an opportunity, uh, instead of actually having it at a physical location, are we required to do that, or we can do it online? Because that might make it more accessible, especially at the time typically people are having to attend, it's like 5 o'clock, 5:30, that's dinnertime for a lot of young families.
Yeah, I, I believe, I guess I'd have to look carefully at the policy to see if it requires a physical location, it may not, in which case there would be the opportunity to hold electronic meetings. There's some additional requirements that apply to electronic meetings under the open meeting law.
Sure.
We have to post it a little bit different. Meeting locations have to be public to, available to the public in more than one location, so there are some complications with doing it that way, but I think it would be a possibility. And actually, as I'm saying that, these are not meetings under the open meeting law, so we wouldn't need to comply with that. So yeah, I suspect there would be a way to do them electronically.
Maybe even pilot a couple times just to see, I think that would be phenomenal, just to see. I think that would be phenomenal, just to see, you know, attendance, would that encourage others that typically can't come to come? I don't know.
Yeah. It's a good suggestion. Yeah. I don't see any reason why we couldn't, and if we don't have a quorum of board members, I think it'd be something we could definitely try.
Yeah.
Yeah, good suggestion. Suchan?
To kind of build on what Anna is saying, I think the purpose for these meetings was accessibility. So I really want to endorse and support Anna's suggestion because it opens up another channel of accessibility. However, I'm maybe not seeing the, the value of the district office in how it enhances accessibility, not seeing that that's shouldn't be an option. It can be an option. I'm just trying to, I can see the accessibility in the schools through an online forum, but maybe not the district office quite as much. So was there a reason why we chose the district office?
And Superintendent Krieger may be able to expand on this as well. I think as, as Director Williams pointed out, the consistency of having one location may make it simpler. It can also be difficult at times for schools to prepare for a community listen session, community listening session, and then when it cancels late, we don't give notice until that Friday before the session, there can be some changes that need to be made, changes in schedules that need to be made. So again, it kind of goes back to consistency, but nevertheless, you make a good point. And again, Superintendent Krieger may have some other comments.
That's helpful.
Yeah, I was just gonna add, because I weighed in on this a little bit too. I think we've found, when did we start the community listening sessions? Two, three years ago now?
I think it was 2021.
2021, yeah. And we've, the ones I participated in had immense success, absolutely loved them, gotten some great feedback. It's a lot less formal way to talk to the board and get some feedback. However, I think all of us who have participated in one, you kind of know when you need to, really need to have them, usually if we're talking about a boundary change or there's something really community impactful. All the other times we've had them, usually we end up canceling them, and we started canceling them actually after a couple times when I think three of them in a row, two or three board members went to and the superintendent and no one showed up. So like, you know, we had all this preparation, we started saying, well, if we didn't get it ahead of time, maybe we'll cancel it, because maybe there just wasn't a need at the time. So I think just to your point, just removing it is, maybe there's consistency at the district office by having it, but also knowing, you know, if there's something impacting a specific part of the community, we have that thought process around it. Maybe we have it at this school instead, or this school. So it just lets us make the decision at a time and place without having to be constrained by the policy. Did you have anything to add?
No, I think you said it.
Awesome.
I would agree, I would agree with you, Corey. When we talked about boundary changes, we kind of did purposely go up to Rosemont Middle and have a conversation up there. I think it's smart that we have a one location. We've had schools that had moved things around for us to be there, and then we don't show up because nobody is, has called. So I think that's a smart idea. It'll be interesting to me to see if people would be interested. It might be worth a couple trial runs to see if a Zoom meeting would be nice, but it also is nice to, to see people face-to-face and have those conversations. So no, but it's worth a try or a thought.
Questions or comments? Leah?
I can just add really quick to that. I will say, in my day job working with, you know, people who are really struggling with poverty, I worried about going to something relying on technology, and I was wrong. When you're balancing a lot more in your life, people know how to get on their phone and open a Zoom app, and I do think the accessibility of that and being able to do that while you're feeding your kids or, you know, getting them to whatever they need to get to, I just, I do think it's worth a shot. I think it's a great idea.
And certainly the benefit of this, given that it doesn't prescribe that it's take, that it takes place at district office, but just strikes that language, it gives us that flexibility to, to host it electronically or at a school or at the district office.
Seeing none, we will see you back in about two weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right. We are moving right along into other action items. I would like to invite Mr. Adam Wannenbarger to the podium to discuss the resolution calling special elections to fill school board vacancy and establishing our candidate filing dates.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, and Superintendent Krieger. Here with some election business. As you all know, but for the benefit of the audience, one former director, Bianca Vernig, resigned her board seat in January after being elected to the state legislature. That created a vacancy in that school board seat. The board then filled that vacancy by appointing Director Gardner. But Minnesota law does require that a special election be held to fill the remainder of that term no later than the general election date this November. If anyone is wondering, the, a bill actually was passed during this last legislative session that will change that statutory requirement so that if a vacancy occurs anytime with less than two years left in the term, the board's appointee can serve for the remainder of that term without an election. But that new rule only applies to vacancies occurring on or after July 1st of this year, so we are still subject to the old requirements, and so we got to have an election. So this resolution before you tonight will officially call that special election for November 5th, 2024, to elect one individual to serve as a board member and fill the vacancy in that term that will expire on January 5th of 2026. So that means that that seat will be up for election again next year at our regular 2025 school board election. The resolution directs and authorizes the various election procedures and legal requirements to be fulfilled. Because this is the date of the general election, we as a school district won't have quite as much to do. We won't be directly administering the election itself or running the polling places. Voters will vote at their local city precinct, and the school board race will be on that ballot with all of the other important races this fall. We won't be using our combined polling places. Voting and everything will run through the individual city precincts, but this resolution authorizes the various notices and other requirements that we will be responsible for. The other thing this resolution does is establish the candidate filing dates. There is a standard window of 98 to 84 days before the election in which anyone who meets the qualifications can file an affidavit of candidacy to get their name on the ballot. So for this election, those dates will be July 30th through August 13th. That's a Tuesday, July 30th, and runs through Tuesday two weeks later. So anyone wishing to run can come to the district office during that timeframe, fill out an affidavit of candidacy, and pay a $2 filing fee, or alternately a petition of 500 signatures. So with that, I would recommend approval of the resolution, but I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. This is an action item tonight, so before I go to questions, is there a motion to approve? Second? Motion by Art, second by Sakaoudin. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Excellent. With that, we have a motion to approve by Art, seconded by Sakaoudin. All those in favor of approval say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Next on the agenda, I would like to welcome Shelley Munson to the podium to go over our collective bargaining agreements with vehicle technicians.
Good evening, Chairperson Johnson, school board members, Superintendent Krieger. I'll be referring to the collective bargaining agreement with the school district's vehicle technician employees for the 202425 and the 2526 school years. Before I do so, I want to take a moment to thank our vehicle technicians on behalf of the district as they not only ensure that our large fleet of bus, school buses are well-maintained, they also step in to drive those buses when needed, which has been essential these last few years and for which we're very grateful. These employees represented by the Minnesota Teamsters Public Law Enforcement Employees Union, Local 320, ratified the proposed working agreement on May 10th. I'll highlight the terms of the settlement for you. The wage schedule, as well as the longevity and lead differential schedules in this agreement, were increased 3.5% the first year and 3.5% the second year. The district contribution to health insurance was increased by 12% the first year and by 8% the second year. The tax-deferred matching plan contributions were increased by $100 each year. There were other minor language modifications as well as housekeeping updates to this contract. The total of the new costs involved during the term of this agreement will be within the parameters you've approved. On behalf of the administration, I recommend that you approve the collective bargaining agreement I just summarized, and I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have at this time.
Thank you. This is another action item tonight, so is there a motion to approve? Motion by Jackie, seconded by Leah. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? Excellent. Thank you very much for all the work you did bargaining this, and also I appreciate your words of support for our vehicle technicians because they do do a lot for our district as well. We have a motion to approve by Jackie, seconded by Leah. All those in favor of approval, please say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries on a 7-0 vote. Last, under other action tonight, I would like to welcome Jill Coyle back to the podium a third time tonight to go over our property and casualty insurance renewal.
Our time's a charm. Good evening again. The last item I have for you to close out other action is the district's property and casualty insurance renewal. So first, by way of background, the district is part of a seven-district insurance pool. It's named the Alliance for Liability and Property Services. We call it ALPS. Through the pool, ALPS members have a pooled loss fund to pay for their property and liability losses and claims up to a certain amount, and then layered on top of the pooled amount is traditional insurance to cover larger losses. The cost of participation in the pool is determined annually, and advance notice is required in order to leave the pool. The cost of ALPS includes the district's loss fund contribution, administrative fees, and premiums for insurance coverage for those claims in excess of the loss fund. Coverage lines include, and there's a few of them, property, liability, auto, crime, excess property and liability, errors and omissions, boiler, cyber, and pollution liability. This year, the cost of the package is $2,151,256.89. So that represents a 3.7% increase over what we paid for the same insurance last year. It is a slight increase, but it's much lower than the steeper increases that we were seeing the last few years with the hard property insurance market largely driven by property claims. Not necessarily the district's property claims, but nationwide insurance costs were up. The district's experience with ALPS has been positive, and the costs have been reasonable compared to the more traditional insurance market. This is an action item tonight, and the administration seeks your approval of the ALPS insurance package as I outlined, and also authority to bind coverage.
Thank you. Is there a motion to approve? Second? Motion by Jackie, seconded by Suchan. Are there any questions or comments from the audience? Seeing none, questions or comments from board members? I just wanted to add for the board, I am going to be abstaining from this vote tonight. My private employer has a very small layer of the package here, so just to avoid any perception of conflict of interest, I will be abstaining. We have a motion by Jackie, seconded by Suchan. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? And one abstention, motion carries on a 6-0-1 vote. Thank you. All right. That brings us almost to the conclusion of our agenda tonight. I will turn it over to Superintendent Krieger for superintendent updates.
Okay, I just have a few. First, I want to make sure that our community knows that we have many opportunities for students 18 years old and younger to have free meals throughout the summer. So visit district196.org for complete details, including locations and times. And then lastly, I just want to encourage all of our parents and guardians and families and friends to help their students continue to learn throughout the summer months. Just take a few minutes to get your kids outside and play in nature, to read them a story, to talk with them. All of those activities really help our students be ready to learn come fall when we have a more traditional learning environment. As we heard tonight, our community education department has a wide variety of activities and classes that are fun and educational, and you can look them up by week of the summer, which I think is a great option. So for more information, just go to district196.org and have a great summer.
Excellent. Are there any board members with items they'd like to share tonight? Anna?
So I'm sure some of us have been attending a lot of graduation ceremonies or at least parties, and I had an opportunity to talk to a young man who graduated and is going to be going to HCMC, sorry, yeah, Hennepin County for Technical Institute for HVAC. And I mentioned that we are looking for bus drivers, and that would be a great opportunity for him to possibly work, pay for some of his education, and maybe even snag a career here eventually for HVAC, because I know we're also, there's going to be some people that are retiring in the near future. So if you are out there, when you are out there and talking to recent graduates or even college graduates, or just people who don't even know what they want to do yet, please, please, whatever you can, encourage people to go to our website and look at opportunities. Yeah, that would be, we need bus drivers, and we can't get our kids, if we can't get our kids to school, they can't learn. So.
Excellent. Great reminder. I had a similar conversation with an aspiring lifeguard a couple weeks ago, and I know a community that would love that.
Yes.
Other items board members would like to share? Seeing none, that brings us to the end of our agenda tonight. Is there a motion to adjourn? Motion by Suchan, seconded by Art. All those in favor of adjournment, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed? We are adjourned until Monday, June 24th.